Welcome, everybody, to our meeting of August the 8th after a couple of week break. Good to see so many faces in the audience. And if we could do a roll call, please.
Thank you, Chair Madron. We'll start with you. Supervisor Madron.
Present.
Supervisor Bone.
Yep.
Supervisor Arroyo.
Present.
And Supervisor Wilson.
Aki.
Supervisor Bushnell is not here at the moment.
All right. Thank you very much. And I've asked Kent Swatzky to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this morning. Please join us.
We are in pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your bodily and righteous hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you very much. Oh, we got an overflowing crowd here. There are seats out in here if you want to jump in there. Okay, we're going to start out with any changes to our consent agenda?
Good morning, Chair Madron. There are two changes. Item D7 is being pulled off of the agenda, and item D9 is being pulled for discussion.
Great. Okay, thank you very much for that. D7 being pulled completely, D9 for discussion. And so what we're going to do is read a couple of proclamations and resolutions to start out, and then we'll go to public comment on the consent agenda. But before I get started with that, is there any comments on the consent agenda from the board members other than the proclamations, resolutions we're going to read? Seeing none, then... Any comments on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to go ahead and start out with our item number eight, which is a to proclaim August 2023... I'm sorry. Number... Excuse me a second. Lots of items. It is item number four, the Child Support Awareness Month proclamation. And I'm going to go ahead and read that into the record. Is there someone here today to receive that child support proclamation? Okay, here we go. Whereas August is recognized as Child Support Awareness Month in California and nationwide, and whereas the children of Humboldt County deserve financial and emotional support from both parents, and whereas child support helps reduce childhood poverty, enhance parent-child relationships, and can have a positive effect on children's health and well-being, and whereas Humboldt County is committed to promoting the health and well-being of its children by ensuring that parents contribute financially towards the raising of their children... Excuse me. And whereas during Child Support Awareness Month, it is important to remember that every family, in all their diverse shapes and sizes, can benefit from supportive services, and whereas Child Support Services is dedicated to assisting parents and guardians with every phase of the process, including adapting support orders to reflect changed circumstances, either through the courts or by signed agreements, and whereas in the last year, the North Coast Regional Development of Child Support Services collected and distributed over $10 million in support for families. Now therefore be it resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors proclaims August 2023 to be Child Support Awareness Month countywide, and commends the team members of the North Coast Regional Department of Child Support Services for the thoughtful attention, education, and unbiased support they provide in our communities. So let's thank all the Child Support Service workers and families for all their work here. And so we'll go ahead and get that to Mr. Hoffman, I believe, at a different time. And so with that, our next one is... Okay, I know that Supervisor Bone just wanted to briefly mention Christian Nielsen for his retirement resolution. Supervisor Bone.
Christian Nielsen's worked for the county for 35 years, and I would have bet $100 he wouldn't be here today. I would have won $100, too. Christian is... He's put his time in. He's done a great job for us. He was always there when you had a question. But I think the neatest thing is, is he's worked at planning and building for 35 years, but he works in the same building he was born in. The old General Hospital. So I think he left for a little while before he took the job. But anyway, Christian's going to enjoy a full retirement and have a good time. So we just want to acknowledge all the work he's done for planning and building and for the benefit of Humboldt County. So... And there's a lot of great things to be said about him, but he's not here. He doesn't want to hear it. So... But he's going to hear a little bit. So thanks, Christian.
Great. Thank you. Okay, and one other item of note. There's a lot of really important items on this consent agenda, but one other I wanted to note is we have Supervisor Virginia Bass, past Supervisor Virginia Bass, here in the audience, and she is prepared to take a role on our Behavioral Health Board. So I wanted to thank Virginia for once again stepping up to provide service to our community. Thank you, Virginia. Hey.
Steve?
Yes.
And I think it should be right... She's been on the Behavioral Health Board for years, and she got me onto it 11 years ago. And her commitment to our community far outruns what she's doing today. She stays committed to our community. That shows true commitment. It's a non-paying position, by the way.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, and with that, I believe we are prepared to go to the proclamation for August 2023 as Coast Guard Month here in Humboldt County. Supervisor Arroyo.
Great. Thank you. And we have Captain Scott Powers, Commander McAndrew, and Master Chief Zrelik here to receive this. So please feel free to come on up, and I'll read the resolution. This is a proclamation in recognition of United States Coast Guard Month, August 2023. Whereas the United States Coast Guard is one of America's six armed forces and traces its founding to August 4, 1790, when the first Congress authorized construction of 10 vessels to enforce tariff and trade laws, prevent smuggling, and protect federal revenue. And whereas today's Coast Guard is the nation's oldest continuous maritime service, which over its 233-year history has been known as the U.S. Lighthouse Service, the Revenue Cutter Service, the Steamboat Inspection Service, the Lighthouse Board, the U.S. Life Saving Service, the Bureau of Navigation, the Bureau of... and the Bureau of Marine Inspection and Navigation. And whereas the Coast Guard is a maritime military multi-mission service that is unique among the U.S. military branches for having a maritime law enforcement mission with jurisdiction in both domestic and international waters, and whereas 29 cities have worked diligently to acknowledge the contributions and services provided by Coast Guard members who serve in their communities as well as Coast Guard veterans, and by doing so have been recognized as official Coast Guard cities, including the city of Eureka, which was designated as the second official Coast Guard city in the nation on June 3, 2000. And whereas the county of Humboldt heartily commends the service of the members of the Coast Guard and recognizes the role that service members and their families play beyond city limits throughout our county and the entire North Coast. And whereas Coast Guard family housing in the greater Eureka area lies within the unincorporated portion of the county of Humboldt, Coast Guard members live and work countywide, Coast Guard families support and strengthen our entire community, and our public agencies all benefit from the collaborative and positive relationship we enjoy with Coast Guard Sector Humboldt Bay, Coast Guard Sector San Francisco, Coast Guard Base Alameda, and leaders at the district, area, and federal level. And whereas Coast Guard Sector Humboldt Bay has a complement of 210 personnel that serve the safety and well-being of our community every day, and together Sector Humboldt Bay's team has, within the past year, conducted 180 search and rescue missions, protected $4 million of property, assisted 259 people in distress, and saved 24 lives. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors recognizes August 2023 as U.S. Coast Guard Month in the county of Humboldt. We honor and recognize the many contributions of the Coast Guard to our community and encourage all residents to acknowledge and uplift the meaningful service and sacrifice of the U.S. Coast Guard.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Arroyo. Esteemed members of the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors, citizens of Humboldt County, distinguished guests and fellow Coast Guard members. Today we stand in the heart of Humboldt County, not only to commemorate Coast Guard Month, but also to acknowledge and celebrate the exceptional support Humboldt County provides to the United States Coast Guard. As the Sector Commander of Sector Humboldt Bay, it is a profound honor for me to address this esteemed gathering on behalf of the Sector Humboldt Bay's women and men and express our heartfelt gratitude. The Coast Guard's legacy is one of unwavering service, commitment, and sacrifice. For over two centuries, the men and women of the United States Coast Guard have stood as guardians of our nation's shores, defenders of our maritime safety, and beacons of hope during times of crisis. In Humboldt County, we find a shining example of a Coast Guard community that shows tremendous dedication. Your steadfast support and understanding not only reinforce the bonds between our Coast Guard members, but also strengthens the very foundation of our shared mission. Today, as we gather to celebrate Coast Guard Month, it is essential to recognize not just our uniformed personnel, but also the amazing Coast Guard families and loved ones who stand alongside them, offering unwavering support. Their sacrifices and encouragement enable our Coast Guard members to serve with profound sense of duty and purpose. In commemorating this month, let us also take a moment to remember those who have given their all in service to our nation, and their courage and sacrifice to inspire us to uphold the highest ideals and values of the United States Coast Guard. Humboldt County, your contributions to our operations are immeasurable, and I want to express our heartfelt gratitude for your unyielding support, cooperation, and partnership. From providing a safe harbor during maritime emergencies to assisting in search and rescue operations, your commitment is a cornerstone of our success. Today, we celebrate the shared values that bind us: resilience, dedication, and commitment to ensuring the safety and security of our coastal communities. The waters that surround us, which are both our livelihood and our sanctuary, are safer and more secure through our combined efforts. As we mark this occasion, I'm honored by the decision of Humboldt County Board of Supervisors to present a proclamation from the county. This proclamation not only recognizes the Coast Guard's service, but also highlights the deep-rooted partnership between the Coast Guard and the people of Humboldt County. It is a testament to the collaborative spirit that defines our relationship. In conclusion, I extend my heartfelt appreciation to the people of Humboldt County for your exceptional support of the Coast Guard. Your commitment bolsters our resolve and strengthens our ability to fulfill our vital mission. Together, as we look ahead, we will continue to uphold our values of honor, respect, and devotion to duty that define both the Coast Guard and Humboldt County. Thank you, Humboldt County, for being an unwavering partner on this journey of service and sacrifice. Semper Pratis, always ready. And thank you very much.
That's great. Did you... Any board member want to add any comments at this point? Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you very much. It's really nice to meet the new faces, relatively new faces of Sector Humboldt Bay. And as a tenured veteran of the Coast Guard Reserve, I appreciate the connection we have and just the ability to interface with Sector Humboldt Bay on a regular basis, both professionally in this role and as a coastie. So thank you so much for all you do there. And it really is a pretty dramatic setting in which to operate. The area of responsibility that Sector Humboldt Bay has is a wild and woolly part of the North Coast, and I really appreciate all you do every day, really literally putting your lives on the line for all of us. So thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Supervisor Bone.
Yeah, and I want to... Oh, I'm sorry. Peter Frampton's here.
Hang on. You'd think I'd remember to do this. You would.
Welcome to the Grand Canyon.
There you go. Supervisor Bone.
As you stated, you're part in the community away from your professional duties. I think your families, the wives, the husbands that serve, you know, that come with the people that are serving, the Coast Guard housing, I've been involved with them for over 30 years through Ruben Empire Little League. And it's so funny that every once in a while you get that one kid that's really, really good, and the first thing they ask him is, "How long are you here for?" Because they don't want to waste them if you're only going to be here a year or two. But I... And your commitment, the spook house that you guys have done at Halloween that was always... And I don't know if you're having a... I remember this was a big deal in 2000. I was... Dave Tyson was the city manager, I believe. Nancy Fleming was the mayor. This was a big, big deal because they used to have a big dance. And I'm hoping, hopefully Supervisor... It was the Coast Guard Ball. I mean, you wore a tuxedo. Everybody dressed up. So I'm hoping, hopefully that our own coastie Supervisor Arroyo will start organizing that to recognize everybody so in her spare time. So... But anyway, the benefit you guys bring to our community is it's not just water. I've seen your bird probably haul out a dozen guys out of our woods that have had accidents and other things. And your training missions, you time perfectly to go over our opening ceremonies at Little League at a recent golf tournament, recognizing the military. Those training sessions that are perfectly timed, we really appreciate, too, because it gives us a chance. And I don't think you'll ever see one of the birds fly by without everybody going... So thank you for everything you do. Thank you for everything you bring to Humboldt County.
Well said, Supervisor Bone. Any other supervisor with comments on this item or the consent agenda? And let's recognize Supervisor Bushnell has arrived. Thank you. Any other comments? No? Seeing none. I do see that Director Hoffman from Child Support Services is here. And Director Hoffman, I'm sorry, I didn't have my Zoom up. We did read the proclamation. Would you like to say a few words? And can we unmute him, or does he need to do that? What is it, star six? To unmute? There he is. There you go.
Good morning. I apologize for the technical difficulties. Thank you so much for the... Thank you, supervisors, for the proclamation of child support today. I apologize that I'm not there in person today. We are attending a conference in celebration and awareness of Child Support Month. It's a really important month for our program. This is the month that we take to build recognition and awareness at the local, state, and national level. So I really appreciate your proclamation today and recognizing our department. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you and all your staff for all the hard work you do for families. We very much appreciate it. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead to public comment, and I start out in Zoom. And I do not see any hands up in Zoom. We just have two phone numbers there, but no hands up. So we'll go ahead and go to those here in the audience today. Anybody that would like to speak on the consent agenda, please come forward to the podium or line up to be prepared. And you'll have three minutes, and please tell us which item on the consent agenda you're speaking on, and please stay on topic. Thank you very much.
Kent Swatzky, the first item I wish to speak on is item 27. And I think we said it has to do with adopting amendments to the classifications of California attorneys, and I think it set a record for attachments, like 32. So I guess that's what lawyers do. They stretch things out and go forever. I did notice a kind of an anomaly in here. We're approving action summaries, one going way back to June, and they're kind of out of sequence. I don't know. Sometimes we miss, and it's always important that those things get done in a timely manner so that you guys can see what's going on, and we can review when we know. Let's see. There was... There was a really large project on here, over $1 million. I think we have a contract going through, which is on consent also, but we always have to keep the big dollars flowing also. And I did, in closing, I did want to say a little bit later in the meeting, I think we have closed session item, and the people from the union are here, and I really support the IHHS workers. It's a pleasure to see the house full.
For these kinds of things, we don't do clapping. We do... You can do this if you like. And I do allow some lenience on clapping for those things that I think there's common support in the community for, because we don't want to be divisive. Anyway, welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, ladies and gentlemen of Humboldt County. I come to you as a person with lived experience and of the Behavioral Health Board. We are very... I am very honored and privileged to have Virginia Bass's application. And if it would be approved this morning, it would be a great appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And I know there are a lot of SEIU folks here today. So this is on the consent agenda. So if there's anybody that wants to speak on the consent agenda, this is a good time to do that. But if you are here to speak about the contract, which I know we're all hoping to get done sooner than later, it is a closed session item. So rather than having comment from SEIU on public comment on non-agenda items, it is actually an agenda item as a closed session item. And that would be the appropriate time for SEIU folks to make comment on those contracts. I apologize that it doesn't happen right away. It will be at about 11 o'clock. We would take comment on the SEIU contract if that's what you're here for. If you're here to speak on consent agenda items, please come forward and come to the podium and let us know which item you're here to speak on. Seeing nobody else coming to the podium for the consent agenda, we will bring that back here to the board then for final consideration and a motion.
I'll move consent minus the two items that were pulled.
Items seven was pulled for a later date, and item nine is pulled for discussion. Great. Thank you for that question.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Supervisor Wilson and a second by Supervisor Arroyo. And let's do... Do we have voting tabs today? I don't see anything. Not on mine. Let's go ahead and do a roll call, please. You guys got a voting tab, yeah?
You don't have your Supervisor Madron?
No, and I just opened it, you know, here, but I could reopen it. But let's do roll call for this one.
I may need you to open and reopen. Let me try and do this again, because my computer isn't coming up where I have votes tabs.
Okay, I can do that. I will open and reopen. Thanks for bearing with us, folks. All the fun technology we have. There it is. Join. Okay, I reopened it, and there's a voting tab. Everybody has a voting tab? Okay. All right, go ahead and cast your votes then, please.
My computer isn't showing the screen, so if you can let me know if everybody's done their vote, so I can record and see everybody's done it.
Yep.
It's my system.
It's okay. Did anybody vote no?
No. It's showing one not here, so it's a 5-0.
Okay, 5-0 vote passes. Great. Thank you very much. And with that, we will go to items pulled from consent, I believe, is what's next. And that will be item nine. And both Supervisor Wilson and myself have sponsored this item. And I think it's self-explanatory. Basically, we're asking for support for legislation, I believe it is. So do you want to speak to this Supervisor Wilson?
I'll just speak to her just extremely briefly, and then I know it was asked to be pulled by Supervisor Bushnell, so I'll afford her the time to talk about this. I think it's... I think honestly, I was... I wasn't here last week, so I was surprised this was on consent, because I do think it is something that deserves some discussion. So this is Senate Bill 252, and it is divest... It's a bill that would divest our public retirement systems with relationship to both calpers and with relationship to the teachers as well, to divest our funds from fossil fuel companies in an effort to move us away from a... Or move us towards a carbon-free future, or at least in that direction. And so that's really what this is. It's just, there's a lot of retirement funds across the United States, both public and private, that are moving in this direction. Divestiture from these types of things is common, but never... But also something that deserves discussion. And so there you go. I support this bill. I think it has a lot of support within the legislature, and that's what I got for you.
Okay, any other questions, clarifications from board members on this item before we take public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to Zoom first. Do we have any hands up there, Nikki?
Yes, Chair Madron 0326 is the first caller.
Okay. Well, and their hand just went down. So it looks like we got 3053. Your hand is up. Press star six to unmute. There you go. Welcome.
Good morning. Thomas Holder here. I actually wasn't going to comment on this. I had no idea, but being pulled, I looked it up real quick. This is kind of an interesting one to have on consent. I'm just going gut reaction here. Very, very interesting. I'm confused why someone would sponsor this, but also not vote for green energy within Humboldt County a couple of years ago. So that kind of confuses me. I think as people that are in control of public resources, and you might want to look at what's the return on the investment, what kind of... If you guys have unfunded liabilities and deficits because of downturn in the economy, may not be smart to divest if it's giving you good returns. I didn't see any data that's showing the returns or not returns. I'm just... Still, I can't wrap my head around supporting something, hey, let's divest from fossil fuels, but previous records shows let's vote against green energy projects. So just a little confused here. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, commenter. And I don't see any other... Well, there's one more hand up. Just made it under the buzzer there. We've got the last four digits are 5039. Star six to unmute. And if you're watching the arc, the video feed, it has a delay, so it's good to turn the sound off on that when you're calling in by Zoom, because otherwise you could miss your opportunity. So again, star six to unmute. 5039, are you there? One last try. 5039, star six to unmute. Okay, I suspect you're watching... There you go. Welcome. You're unmuted. Go ahead, 5039. We are not hearing anything from you. 5039, you're unmuted. Now you're muted again. Okay, there you go. You're unmuted. Welcome. 5039, you seem to be having difficulties at your end. We see you are unmuted. And I'm going to go ahead and go to comments here in the room. Anybody that would like to speak on this item here in the audience, please come forward. You'll have three minutes to talk on this item. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Deborah Dukes. I'm a retired public school teacher. And instead of spending my retirement having fun and doing useless things, I'm spending it fighting against fossil fuel companies, coming to Board of Supervisor meetings, and having people rack up my injured knee. The Zoom difficulties are why I decided to come down here anyway. I spent my career devoted to the next generation and by extension, the generations after that. In my 403B retirement fund, which had about a buck 25 in it, I divested from fossil fuels against the advice of my financial advisor when the Ford Found... Or the... Oh, shoot. The Standard Oil Foundation. Can't remember the exact name of... When they divested, and I thought, my gosh, if they can divest, I can divest. It bothered... It bothers me tremendously that my pension, for which I am, on which I'm very dependent financially, is benefiting from fossil fuel money. I'm, there have been a couple of times when I've almost said, I don't want my pension anymore. Then I sobered up. But I know they have divested from thermal coal, and that was not a problem, everybody agreed with that. And while thermal coal may be a worse contaminant, I'm sorry, I'm on drugs too, I apologize. My knee hurts. While fossil fuel may not be as obviously awful as thermal coal, it's doing just as much damage, and it's the number one greenhouse gas contaminant in the world. I would urge you to write this letter of support. I'm doing everything I can at the state level to try and get this done too. Thank you very much for listening and thank you for your understanding of my situation.
No worries. Thank you for coming in, appreciate that. Welcome.
Kent Swawski, I don't think I'm on drugs, but you never know these days. I did ask to have this pulled, and I kind of agree with Supervisor Wilson, that it does deserve some discussion. And notice, I'm, you know, I always question, you know, divesting yourselves of these that may possibly have been a very high return. There's another way of dealing with this. You basically, if you have, I believe, certain preferred stock, you get to vote what the company does. You might consider doing a takeover rather than divesting yourselves from this instead. I guess it would be a possible hospital takeover, but possibly that would give, enable you, if you felt that strongly about it, to direct, to direct the company to move in other directions or diversify. So I'm not sure that this is not have unintended consequences. My problem partly with it is, you know, I tend to disagree with some people. I feel fossil fuels will always be a part of our system. Unfortunately, until the population goes down, we're not going to be able to control what's happening in China, or some of the India, or some of these other countries. I'm always into checking different things. I think that eventually, something's going to come along rather soon as far as something else, and the fossil fuels may become obsolete totally because of that. But in the meantime, I also question why, why, if this is so important, this action takes place in '31. I mean, you know, the way I understand it, it wouldn't have an effect on things if you voted, if this did pass until '31. If it's that dire, I mean, this should, this should be an urgency ordinance, and some of the logic just doesn't quite track with me, a little bit what Thomas Mulder said before. You know, if you're, if someone's showing up here, and I'll be quite honest with you, if you're going to vote for something like this, you should go home and you should probably make sure you came here in an electric car today, at least. Or you should go ahead and, I don't know if Supervisor Wilson has a natural gas meter or any of you who hooked up your house and protest, have PG&E remove those. I think those would be some of the first steps to make it known and to lead by example. Otherwise, people feel that, you know, we're a little bit on the hypocritical side out there. I personally use, I personally burn, burn a top-quality Medron firewood to heat my houses. And a lot of this is coming off burn jobs that are in the forests up there. So it's actually helping the forest, and some people are totally against that also, but I feel my small little contribution to not using some of these fossil fuels and using what we have locally is important. So thank you for the opportunity to speak, and you may wish to rethink this a little bit, or at least if you are going to vote for it, I hope that you will go that extra mile to walk the walk and talk the talk. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else here today that would like to speak on this item? This is your opportunity. And so seeing none, we'll bring it back here to the board. I will say that I talked to our staff, and Humboldt County does not have any investments in the fossil fuel industry. That's my understanding in talking with staff that have that knowledge, so I was pleased to hear that. But of course, we're also talking about PERS and the investment the state makes, et cetera. But it is true, I mean, we all need to do our part, and we're all very different. We live in rural versus urban areas and different things. And so, you know, figuring out where each of us individually can make an improvement is an important step forward. So take that suggestion seriously. Any other comments from board members? Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I asked to have this item pulled. Thank you for your comments, I really appreciate them. I'm not supporting this today only because I wish to have more information and to investigate more thoroughly. I live, and my community is a very rural area that is very dependent on different sources. And so while I support thoughts and ways and values, I am not supportive of not investigating a little farther and deeper before I put my name to something, so that would be the only reason. Thank you.
Okay, great. Any other comments? Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, I need a lot more information. I think, I think if we deep dive into the three wind energy companies that are going to work off our coast, I think they all have investments with fossil fuel companies. Shell's got a full oil, Equinor's invested in, with BP. So I'm trying to figure out, does that constitute that we can invest in offshore wind? Because I, they have a big presence in offshore wind because it's an energy, and they're energy companies any way you look at it. And then the CEO of Calpers, we're talking about a 1.7 on the teachers, 2% for us total investment in fossil fuel-related companies. The reason you have an eight-year to a 10-year buyout is because if we made it, if, and I'm sure the state's waiting, Calpers is waiting for our letter saying, oh, Humboldt wants us to do it, let's do it. But I'm, politically, it looks really good and everything else, but I mean, you have to stick into reality. The divestment has to take over time over eight years because you don't want to divest 2% of your stock, because what that does is it might drop the price of the stock and cause a problem on the market. And I mean, in the long run, we do have to look at the financials. I mean, a lot of this stuff is great stuff, but as long as China keeps opening coal plants every 10 days and things like that, we're going to have an issue. And we need to work on a, you know, we need to work on, you know, further the Kyoto Agreement. We need to do a lot of other stuff. This sounds really good and it looks really good on a resume, and I'm not against it. But the CEO of Calpers does not think it's a great idea. And then the other factor being is, what, so if any oil company is invested in a wind energy, we can't invest in the wind energy, or what's our parameters going to be? And I just, I just know that the fossil fuel business is very, very heavy into wind, solar, they're investing in everything because that's what they do. They provide energy, whatever form of energy it is at the time. So where I think it's a, it's a, it's a great feel-good item, and I think it's a, it's a great thing to stand up for. I think we have to look at the economic, I don't know if anybody's looked at Calpers lately, but I think we owe $280 million or $300 million on our Calpers. I don't know if we should be, you know, maybe we should be telling Calpers what to do, but I mean, the thing is, I think we should let them run their investments and do what's right, because they're, they're getting pressure as it is, so. I, there's just too shallow of a pool of information here for me to, there's too many questions without answers.
Thank you. Anybody else? Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you, and I appreciate the comments on this item. I appreciate also that the bill text was in our packet, and it is a pretty slim bill text, but one thing that I thought was very helpful was that there's a clause that says, "Nothing in this section shall require the board to take action as described unless the board determines in good faith that the action described in this section is consistent with the fiduciary responsibilities," blah, blah, blah. So that's referring to the Board of Calpers. So if it's not financially responsible, they are not required to follow this. So I thought that was a good caveat, because I can see the, the important point of wanting to make sure that our retired employees have good returns on their investments and that, you know, our liability is also as reasonable as possible. So I think those are, those are good points, and I do believe that they're addressed by this, allowing the board to ensure that they're financially responsible in their duties. I also, I understand the argument that, you know, if we're not doing everything exactly right, then why do it at all, except for, you know, I don't think that's how we're going to make change when it comes to our greenhouse gas emissions. I think every, every element and every way of approaching this helps and gets us closer to our goals. So it's one thing to say individuals should be responsible for their own actions with a wide variety of financial capacities and abilities to make those types of changes in their lives, and it's quite another to say that, you know, the state should look at higher-level policies around investments. So I, I support this fully, and I appreciate, you know, the urging to do all we can around this, and I believe this is one of the many things that we can encourage our state to do on our behalf.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Wilson?
Thank you, and I appreciate the comments with relationship to the risks involved, with relationship to investments. I think we have to counterbalance that with the risks involved with the not changing our direction. I mean, we do understand there is a cost to not decarbonizing our economy. We're seeing that cost play out every day across the planet currently. And so it's not just about investments in portfolios, it's about ultimately people's lives, ecosystems on our planet, and our ability to survive. So I think we're, we need to take that, those costs into account in these discussions. I also want to emphasize that I would like this letter to be sent to both CSAC and RCRC, which voted to oppose SB 252. And so to let them know our position on this if we choose to move forward. Thanks.
Okay. Supervisor Arroyo?
Sorry, there's one thing I forgot to say, which is that I think it's a fair point that many of the energy companies that are investing in green energy are also, have historically invested in fossil fuels and are fossil fuel-driven in their, you know, in some of their income streams. And what I've started to see, to some degree, and I'm sure we'll see more of, is those companies farming subsidiaries that are green energy-focused. So that would create a company, a wing of their company at least, that could, could be, could be part of, you know, these investments. And that is one possible way that, you know, those companies can continue to work on developing their green energy portfolios, so I hope that that does indeed happen.
All right, and we've got, I want to do public comment before 10 if we can, so let's try and wrap this up. Anything new to add, please? Not on non-agenda items.
Yeah, and even though this sounds good, divestiture's not going to do anything, 2%. It's not going to change one iota, because over time, someone else is going to take over. These are, these are issues. If they're going to make money, they're going to do. Now, you're right, maybe the, you know, Shell has Shell Wind, completely separate from Shell Oil, Royal Dutch Shell, all the different, they've got a conglomeration of names coming off of Shell. Same to do with Chevron, same to do with Standard Oil, same to do with BP and BP Asia and everything else. They all have different things. So I guess if they move the, if they put it into something that's all green, it's okay, but it's still run by a parent company that is a fossil fuel company. And the reason they're a fossil fuel company is in 1860, when they first started making kerosene for the street lamps and things like that, 1880, there were no windmills to be had. So that's what they invested in, because that's what, that's what the public demanded. Now, the public is demanding, things are changing. We're making, I mean, we've, we've hit our, our numbers, I think, on, and I think we're furthering those, those numbers. And I think as we move forward, the other day, there was a great story from Public Works, thank you, Tom, 12 charging stations, 12 electric vehicles. I mean, that, that's, that's a step in the right direction. That's, oh, 10% of our fleet or anything else, and this is over a shorter time, and we've got to test these vehicles. So we're making those steps up here as a board, we're making this stuff, our staff and our directors are making that staff. They've heard us, and that's what, what we require. But something that is really not going, we're not doing anything but creating a situation where we could, if the CEO of Calpers was for this, and I understand the verbiage in here, but if this passes, if this passes, Calpers is going to get a lot of pressure, board members are appointed and everything else, to divest, and they're going to hear you when they say that. So I just think, there's just too many holes in this thing. I mean, it sounds great, and you, I mean, you can wear it on a, it's a good bumper sticker, but until I know all the rules and the guidelines of this thing, I think there's a reason that our representative state agencies, both rural and our full county representatives and so many other people are opposing this. So bring it back with a lot more answers, and I, I don't think there's, there's opposition to it, there's just too many I-don't-knows with it right now.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, at this point, I think we're looking for a motion. Supervisor Arroyo?
I'll move approval of the letter.
Second. So motion to approve by Supervisor Arroyo and second by Supervisor Wilson. And do we have voting tabs? Yes, we do. Has everybody voted?
Supervisor Bone, did you vote? Okay, now, now it's, everything's good, so we don't need to take a break either.
Okay, great.
Pass three to two.
Okay, passes three to. All right, with that, thank you for that discussion, and now we're going to go to public comment on non-agenda items. And I'm going to start out with Zoom, and I do not see any hands up there. No, actually, there are two hands up, three hands up. So 0326, star six to unmute. There you go, welcome.
Hi, this is Charles Wilson. Item nine, my, I had my star nine up there, but it didn't recognize me. But anyway, I just wanted to point out that the purpose of the public health system is to provide for employee pensions, not to play political games. And if we're going to do something, do something about China's. They're going to do, provide, doing more pollution right now than all the United States put together. And in a couple of years, they're going to be polluting more than all of the world together, but we're doing nothing. So anyway, the purpose of the health, the public health, the public retirement system is to provide for pensions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have 3053. Star six to unmute. There you go, welcome.
Good morning, Thomas Mulder here. I just wanted to confirm you can hear me?
Yes, we can, Thomas.
Okay, and I'm speaking as myself as an individual, just to be clear. Trying to work on, I'm following this actually to, you know, I was thinking of bringing positivity, and I'm really, really thankful, we live in a county where, you know, you have the choice to live on one house for a thousand acres, single-family residence, duplex, apartment, tiny home, any other of those. I think it's really cool that we have all those opportunities within our county, and I support everyone being able to live in their home and not be disturbed by their neighbors. I want to give thanks to Supervisor Bone and the individuals that had foresight to build those baseball fields in Cotten area. There is a tournament that almost got canceled this weekend, but luckily it went through, and the foresight they had to bring in people that want to spend money and be a part of our community, hopefully it'll be bigger next year. I really appreciate that. A little turn of things here, and I'm probably just going to read this off just because of what happened. I just, I want to say I read your board bylaws, and I'm not going to name-drop here, but I don't see in there where you can have personal property and your own chair behind the dais. Is that something that's offered to other boards and commissions of the county? I'm just curious. And being as I don't see it in your bylaws, if something was brought forward for anyone, would that be considered, you know, personal gain? Now, speaking as myself, I mean, I can easily get a doctor's note that says I can have my own chair. I don't know if I'm provided the opportunity to have my own chair, but just saying it out there, we want, you know, equality for all and same opportunities for all. You know, if Supervisor Bushnell had their own devices there or whatever, it might make them more comfortable and be able to handle long, long meetings to talk for, you know, eight, 10 hours at a time. Just throwing out hypotheticals. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and keep moving positive. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and next we have 0116. Star six to unmute. There you go, welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
Yeah, Ash Peter here, Lost Coast Populist, wanted to talk a little about some of the building developments we have going on around the county, the high-rise buildings with fractional parking setups, and, you know, they got the centralized stores, so, you know, on the surface, it looks like a good thing, you know, people don't, don't have to drive to get the stores and stuff, but it also mimics the 15-minute city setup we see in China, where, you know, it limits people's mobility, and this is kind of going to come into play, I think it's like Klaus Schwab's daughter just said something about, it's going to be like global climate lockdowns, similar to what we experienced with COVID, but it's going to be set up with these 15-minute cities to where people are like zoned, where you can't travel out of a certain zone due to climate change. And this is really, really kind of disturbing, because, you know, like, like I said before, you got, you know, these people putting this in motion that fly around on private jets and go to, you know, restrict us, us common folk. Just urge the board to resist, you know, any, any kind of communist agenda that, you know, limits people's mobility, or any kind of zoning that, you know, makes people have permits to travel to, from one zone to another when these housing projects go in that don't have parking set up. I was also suggesting at the Eureka City Council that these, you know, housing projects that are, you know, high-rise in nature, maybe the ground floor should be a parking garage, and then they would have parking for the entire complex? I don't know, something to think about, but that's all, thank you.
Thank you commenter, and next we have 7108, star 6 to unmute. There you go, welcome.
Thank you. This is Bonnie Blackery, and I was just calling to just let the board know that the south fork of the Eel River is lower than it was last year at this time, so maybe some of the other places that are getting snowmelt are in better shape, but the south fork of the Eel River is lower than it was last year, and I don't know if the county's looking into what's going on. The red wave has already gone into a second stage because of how much water is in the river. Anyway, I just wanted, you know, the drought's not over, and the river's running low. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. And 0326 has their hand up, I think that's the second time, isn't that? I called on them? Oh, it may very well be. Is this Genevieve? If it is Genevieve, then go ahead and unmute, star 6, thank you, welcome.
Oh, thank, thank you, this is Genevieve.
Yep.
So I'm really concerned of situation, because CCP is taking over the whole world, and they have 100 police stations in the United States, and Chinese people buying up land, we don't need invasion, they'll be here. So I would just want to say that we had to be aware of it, and also get out of WHO, because 86% controlled by the globalists, they're going to control us, we should have our sovereignty. Remember there is a song called, "Once upon a time, there will be a step heaven, we raised our glass or two, and laughing away the hours, thinking all the great things we will do. Those were the days, my friend, we thought they never end, we sing and dance for every other day. We live the life we choose, we fight and never lose. That's the war the day when we were young and sure to have our way. La 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 la, la la, la 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 la, la la, la 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 la, la 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 la. So we need to go back to our freedom, so we can live the way we want to do and have sovereignty. That's what I was going to say. Freedom is very important for everybody. Thank you for my opportunity to talk."
Thank you very much. And we'll go now to those here in the audience, and three minutes on items not on the agenda.
Ken Swatki, I will not attempt to sing ever, because that would be cruel and inhuman punishment to you folks. I wish to read something into that's kind of distressing to me, and it's, was brought up a little while ago, and some of these projects that are out there, and this one's particularly related to a Danco project in Arcata, and it seems to be a dysfunction with HUD also, so I don't know, these people are losing their benefits and things. So I want to read this letter to the editor, which was in the Arcata, it was, it was regarding Arcata, but it was in our time standard. Letter to the editor, Arcata Low Income Housing Becomes Unaffordable. I am a tenant at the new, the new low-income housing apartment building, Sora Place in downtown Arcata. I moved in when the building was first opened in February 2022. Less than a year ago, my rent here increased by 24%. I just recently received another notice from my landlord, Danco Property, saying my rent will be going up again on October 1st, 2023. These two increases will mean my rent at Sora will be going up by 47% in less than one year. HUD has allowed this to happen. I am currently living on SSI disability payments and CalFresh food assistance. No matter how much my rent goes up, my SSI payment stays the same. The amount of money I will have left after I pay my rent will not be enough for me to live on, 300 in cash and 191 in food assistance, which probably is through the county. I am not alone in this, there are several other older tenants at Sora who are in a similar situation to mine. These rent increases seem cruel and unfair to me. I searched for a year for affordable housing before finding Sora Place. This apartment has given me the precious gift of safety and privacy I need to heal from extreme childhood trauma. I'm afraid I and others will be forced into homelessness because of these drastic hikes in our rent. If you or your readers have any thoughts, insights, or suggestions on the situation, I would greatly appreciate hearing them. I also have another document that you may wish to read also, from another Danco project. And I did try to vet Mary a little bit, and I did find somebody who knew her, and hopefully she will be contacting me. But I've run into other situations with other tenants that have had the same problem. Apparently, the federal government through HUD is defunding these people or disqualifying them from some of their incomes, and so they're paying a very higher percent of rate. This is something that is not the time to be doing this. I guys, I know you do have a legislative lobbyist who would lobby on these things, it'd kind of be interesting to find out and fact-check this, if it is true. I think we need to be sending off letters regarding this. So anyway, appreciate your, your time, and I did have copies to whom it may concern regarding Danco build out there. And again, I will reiterate, those of us in Blue Lake, many of us do not wish to have this kind of project out there. We like a rural smart kind thing, and we'd like to keep our biggest complexes at 10, 10 units or less, which is what we have right out there now, and we can, we can satisfy our housing need with that, with the ADUs especially, the nice little houses that go in your backyard. Thinking about between speak.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, with that, that concludes public comment, and, oh yes, excuse me, please, come forward, I didn't see you.
Hi, good morning Supervisor. My name is Todd Phelps, my wife and I own a home in Shelter Cove that we've run an Airbnb out of for the last two seasons. At no time would we ever consider that particular house as a month-to-month rental, and I know of five others off the top of my head that are being run as Airbnbs whose owners would not rent month-to-month. We offer our house, two bedrooms, the majority of the house, I have my library and my office in the house, and we use the house, and it's just not set up for month-to-month rental. We also have an apartment for rent, we, our tenant, that's long-term tenant, had to rent a three-bedroom house, they're expecting their first child, children I should say, twins in two weeks, and they've got relatives from India coming. So we've had that apartment advertised for two months and have got one phone call yet. Normally, that little apartment, it has its own garage, washer dryer, we do half the utilities. When that ad comes out in the paper, my wife fields half a dozen calls that day. Ever since the pot market bust, Southern Humboldt has emptied out, and I'm pretty sure there's a lot of communities around the county in the same way. So be cautious about assumptions on the housing market. A lot of people that are having trouble getting a house is because they've got bad credit, bad dogs, bad smoking habits. I would caution against putting restrictions on Airbnbs in any form or torium regulation. I did notice Supervisor Madrone, you were aware of a couple of cases where owners chose to do Airbnb and their tenants had to be evicted. I sympathize with that, truly. That's a hard case, but I remind everybody, hard case makes bad law, and that legal wisdom rings as true today as it did in antiquity, and it carries over to regulation. To try to regulate over hard cases is going to inevitably result in poor regulation or complex regulation, it probably causes more trouble than it solves. So that was my comment, and I appreciate all your time and hard work, God bless you all.
Thank you very much. All right, one more comment. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Roman Dylan Fiero, speaking as a private citizen today. I'm here to ask you to sign a letter of support, and I'll be more than happy to draft it, you have my email, I sent it a few days ago. And the reason is to support the Shasta County Board of Supervisors, and, and to support and encourage that body's decision to restore constitutional elections in their county, and I think it serves as a step in the right direction for the rest of California. Shasta County's decision was to eliminate the electronic voting machines and restore elections to an easily trackable, non-hackable paper ballot. Their decision was not made lightly, I will definitely say, it was, the decision was made after hearing the side of the representatives of the voting machine companies who have been certified by the California Secretary of State, reviewing the state of Missouri's hand count model, and that of the policy of numerous Western nations such as Canada, England, France, and Germany, who have also adopted paper ballot and rejecting the electronic voting machines. I was going to ask for a second request of a letter, but I'll just keep it simple and not try to get my hopes up too much, which is that in the state senate, well, the law has moved to the state senate, there's a law, not a law, a bill called AB 969, and it appears to be as a kind of retaliation against Shasta County, which is to basically centralize the entire state's election process, mandate the use of electronic voting machines. So I was going to say, maybe draft a letter about that, but I just want to let you know, one request for a letter I think is enough. So anyway, AB 969 seems to be very bad, and I've written Mike McGuire saying, please vote against that. But anyway, that's all for today, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, that appears to be the end of our public comment at this point, and so now we have a time set at 10 o'clock. Apologize for being slightly late, thanks for being here, Director Rogatz, and I assume that you'll be coming up to present. And this is on a presentation on the California Redwood Coast Humboldt County Airport Instrument Landing System, Category 2 Instrument Procedure Feasibility Study. Welcome.
Thank you Chairman Madrone and Board of Supervisors for having us here today. Cody Rogatz, Director of Aviation. Just wanted to give a little background on a project that we've been exploring in our aviation department for the ACV airport. Before we jump into the details, I just wanted to highlight public perception, you, all of your offices, the CAO, my office, we often hear from the public about people not flying from ACV because the fog cancels all of the flights, or delays all of the flights. That isn't the case, we are actually right on par with the national average for cancellation rates and, and delays, but we understand that the fog can be a challenge at times. So we've started exploring what can we do to improve our performance and, and be better with the on-time and cancellation rates, be better than that national average. And that led us, of course, to the instrument landing system. The instrument landing system we currently have is a category 1, there's three categories with some subcategories in there, I won't get into the details with you this morning, but the category 1 is the baseline, a category 2, which we're exploring, is mid-grade, and category 3 is the top end, those are typically at your largest of airports, SFO, LAX, Seattle, that have those category 3 type systems. So what we're exploring is, is trying to upgrade. I have Paul Hannah here with me from Lean Corporation, just a little bit of background on Paul. All those airports I just listed out, and many others, he has helped with similar projects as we're doing here in this feasibility study for the CAT 2. Paul's worked at, at very large airports, the, the largest of airports in our country, as well as some smaller facilities like ours, but his group at Lean Corporation is the best in the business, and I say that confidently, because a recent conversation I had with an airport just down the road from SFO, he mentioned a challenge he was working on with SFO changing some of their flight patterns, and he mentioned they had some whiz-bang ILS guy working on projects at SFO, and I said, oh, that's Paul Hannah, and he said, how do you know that? I said, because he's helping us too here at ACV. So with that, I'll turn it over to Paul to, not to set the bar too high, but to kind of cover some of the details of, of what his team's helping us explore.
Great, thank you, and is your mic on there, the little button? There we go.
I'll try to swallow it a little bit here. And I think we do have just a, a couple of images that we wanted to share. Perfect, thank you so much, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with all of you here this morning. So as, as Cody highlighted, there are some challenges here at the airport in, in Arcata that, that do make it difficult for flights to come in at exactly the time that they want to, and even when they do schedule to come in at that desired time, sometimes the weather is just a little bit worse than what they were hoping to, to get to. That's actually no surprise, as many of you may have heard in the past, this airport was designed with a function of existing in poor weather conditions for the Navy and the Coast Guard, for its crews to actually train to, to make safe landings and departures in those low visibility conditions. So it's no surprise that from time to time, the weather gets a little bit worse than what we'd like to see out there. And what's happening right now at the airport is there are a number of enhancements that are being made to the airfield lighting and the resiliency of those systems, not only the way that the power is delivered to the airport, but also the way that the, the lights work, that are setting everything up to make an easier transition, to get to this better instrument approach category, this category 2 ILS system. So we're, we're closer now at the airport than we've ever been before, and that's why this is, I think, the right time to take a look at this feasibility study. And the main challenge we see is mornings like today, where when you, when you get down to what's called a, a measure of visibility. So visibility is if you're driving down the road, how far ahead can you see the cars in front of you, right? And you, you actually get dense fog warnings here, it's, it's so, it's so symptomatic of living here in a beautiful part of the country. So when it's a half a mile, the airport can still safely receive aircraft at the time that they want to. When it gets to worse than a half a mile, there's no options left, not for the current instrument landing system or the current lighting. So that's what we want to try to, to achieve, is getting to that next category down that reduces the visibility. And so what this looks like, this is a very busy chart, but we've tried to color code it to kind of help out. This chart shows every month and the hours, these are the local hours here at, at the airport. Yellow is not great, green is good, white is on the border. And these percentages break down to the way that airlines in particular think about the airport, and how they make their scheduling decisions on when they want to come into the airport, right? So here we are in August, and this morning, the visibility was less than a half mile. So if there was an airline that wanted to come into the airport in the morning, when they look at the current situation, they know that there's basically a 60% chance. To put that in perspective, a hub airport like San Francisco, that number would be 99. For a challenged airport here in California like Monterey, where we also work for, that number is about 91, 93. For your airport to be down in the 60s is extremely challenged, and those are the kinds of hours and months that we want to try to solve to get a better instrument approach system. And I'll come back to that chart in just a second to show you what happens if we get there. So really, what we're looking at with this feasibility study is, first and foremost, this is an airport, and there are people, both on the airplane, on the ground, that we need to protect their safety, you know, at all times, and having a better instrument approach system that gets the aircraft automatically, with automatic guidance, closer to the runway, really enhances that safety posture of the airport for, for both. airport for both aircraft and for the Coast Guard and their helicopters that fly a modified version of this approach today on the same equipment. We also want to make sure that we have improved safety and accessibility for certain business jet operators that come here with some regularity. And our plan to do this is, we have a series of meetings coming up, not only here with members, you know, of the public, but also with the Coast Guard and FAA stakeholders to identify a plan and do everything in our power to secure FAA funding that is available to make these enhancements. This happens at other airports. It happens through a process called a benefit cost analysis, where we show the current state, we show the future state, we talk to the local stakeholders, and then we put forward that plan and request our funding where possible. And this is what would happen if we can get to just the basic category two approach. And what you see here is that across all of the months and all of the hours, the airport suddenly becomes essentially as viable as any of the major hub airports here in California, just with an enhancement in one direction, on one runway, with one kind of critical navigation system. So we can see that, you know, just a little bit of effort and some amount of time, and we'll talk about that in just a second, has a huge potential benefit to the airport and its ability to not only maintain its current service, but potentially attract new service in the future. There is a challenge in December, you'll see there, but a lot of that in December has to do with storms that come through that force aircraft to land in the opposite direction, which currently does not have an instrument landing system and would be very difficult and cost prohibitive to go after. Just for perspective, the category two approaches, when you work in an industry like mine or you work with the FAA, we look at things in these kind of protection surfaces, so that transparent blue is, you know, essentially where the aircraft would be when they have to break out and see the runway. And those yellow surfaces is the potential missed approach. So there's a lot of work we have to do at the airport, not only with the navigation aids and further increasing the backup power and making sure that everything stays on when you need it. The good news is that there are no significant challenges on the airfield that are going to prevent this. There's no, you know, cell phone towers, there's no windmills, there's no air traffic control tower that's punching through one of these surfaces. It's very, it's looking very positive to kind of move forward with these steps. On the airfield themselves, there are some interesting challenges, very unique to the airport, that we'll be discussing how we can overcome, especially in the absence of an air traffic control tower. And one of the outcomes of this feasibility study may be that the airport achieves an air traffic control tower at some point in the future. So that's what we're going to be looking at. This table has a lot of information on it. I'm not going to go through all of it. What I do want to highlight are the timelines on the far right-hand side of the screen. What you'll see here is that there are a number of things that do need to be undertaken to get us to this category two approach at the airport. Some of them can happen very quickly. The real difficult part here is that the instrument procedures that you see on the third row, there's no real way for the airport to move faster than that timeline, which is about 24 months. And the challenge here is that this is FAA-owned equipment. These are, in many cases, FAA-owned lights, and the instrument approach procedure is developed by the FAA as well. So we can only move as fast as their team permits, and right now, that's about 24 months from the point at which a request is made. There are other things that we can work on in parallel. These are not happening in sequence. So, you know, the fastest, you know, if everything went perfectly and funding looked fantastic, you know, we could maybe start looking at these enhancements in about two years from now. But there are other challenges that this feasibility study will identify and work to solve. Our next steps, we have some other kind of meetings here locally, but our feasibility study is planned to be wrapped up here in September with the goal of reviewing the recommendations for the feasibility study and any funding that may be required, both from FAA and other sources at that time. That's all I had to share with you for today. Cody, was there anything else that you wanted to mention?
No, thank you, Paul. Just be glad to answer any questions that the board has at this point on what we've done or what we're trying to do moving forward.
Super exciting. Supervisor Bone.
So for the efficiency factor and obviously public safety and so many other things, would this, could this be fully funded through the FAA?
That's going to be our goal, is pursuing FAA funding. Currently, the ILS CAT I, as Paul mentioned or alluded to, all of that infrastructure, there's multiple components that make that system up on our airfield. It's all owned by the FAA. Ultimately, we would try to keep it that way. There are some larger airports that Paul's worked with that have the cash flow to just purchase their own ILS system, but we're not really interested in pursuing that avenue in a small community. Most small communities like Humboldt don't develop their own ILS at their own cost.
And we're obviously partnering with the Coast Guard up there on this for obvious reasons, so for their air force, so.
Absolutely.
Cost, did I miss that? Did I see that?
He just put some dollar signs up there.
Yeah, and I know what I think. I heard you're a whiz-banger. But, I mean, as you're whiz-banging along, what's this going to cost?
That's a great question. And your line of questioning is exactly right. The goal for many projects like this is to have the FAA provide as much of the funding as possible and is allowed through the FAA's processes. So the total cost, which would not be borne out here by the airport or the county or other stakeholders, is definitely in the multiple millions of dollars, just to be very clear. If we wind up in a situation where a control tower is required, it's definitely multiple millions of dollars. Many of the other enhancements that you see on the screen there are usually measured in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, up to millions, just depending on what the full results of the study are going to find. Much of that, again, is FAA fundable, but at certain percentages, I mean, that's something that we're going to identify through the study.
And then I'm going to go back through the chair. I'm going to go back through the chair. Aren't a majority, we've always heard this and it's been proven, aren't a majority of our delays, I know fog's a bugger, and when Hooven gave the property for this testing in World War II, but aren't a majority of our delays caused by San Francisco?
Yes, they are.
And they have the system.
They do. They also have capacity constraints at SFO that often impact smaller aircraft like us and smaller markets like us. So as we brought on LAX in Denver with United's offerings at ACV with their direct flights, our performance characteristics, our on-time performance and our cancellation rates have improved because not everything is going to and from SFO. So that, the majority of our past and the struggles that we've had have been related to SFO. We're trying to take that next step as we explore this option to make sure that it's always an SFO issue and never an ACV issue, or rarely.
And can you waiver just a hair, since we have the video and the people and everything else? Could you remind everybody about six days from today and what the impact's going to be on our $18 million investment we're making on the airport?
Yeah.
Remind everybody so they don't think, why can't I get a ticket?
Absolutely, yeah. So we will be closed August 14th through the 25th, from 12:30 on the AM on August 14th until 11:30 PM on August 25th. That's to allow Mercer Frasier, our local contractor that had the low bid, to repave our main runway. Paul alluded to it in his presentation. We have a lot of work ongoing that's really setting us up and making this the right time to explore the CAT II potential in the future. And that work that Mercer Frasier and St. Francis are doing out there on our airfield are helping set that up. And I do want to reiterate to the public, we certainly appreciate everybody's understanding while we make these upgrades and address these infrastructure needs so that we can be safe and successful in the future.
And this is all being done because the airplanes won't follow a pilot car?
No comment.
Thank you. Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you. That was very informative. I was curious with the re, I know it's, there's probably a more complicated way of saying this, but the repaving of the runway, is there any opportunity to have surface markings that are going to increase visibility as part of that project? I'm assuming that after the repaving, they'll re-stripe it.
Absolutely. Great question. With the work that we do have upcoming, at the end of that closure, that 12-day closure, there will be temporary markings, which are all FAA compliant. But to get the full markings down, the permanent markings, takes a little bit longer. So that, the permanent markings will be put in place in the nightly closures between end of August and December as they finish up that work. So we will be fully functional so long as the weather cooperates with us, since we're talking about fog and weather here this morning. We'll be fully functional at the end of that closure on August 25th, but there will be ongoing marking improvements taking place.
Great. Thank you. Any other comment? Supervisor Wilson.
Can you bring up the presentation?
Maybe.
We're going to need Nicky's help.
Okay, and I want to just go to the first data set that you have there.
The monthly hour?
The first one, that one.
Yes, sir.
I want to emphasize, I hear what you're saying with relationship to the challenges with SFO and how we, as a smaller airport, get, I would say, short shift on that with relationship to how, you know, they're trying to move people through that airport. So smaller airplanes are going to be second to the larger ones. And so I want to emphasize that these challenges that you see in yellow here are only exponentially made worse when you're talking about the challenges at SFO. It's not linear. It's not like you're twice as likely to have problems. You're actually 10 times more likely to have an issue when you're combining two airports with limitations.
Correct.
This, I want to, I recommend people go to our website or agenda and print this out for themselves, this particular page for those traveling public, and really maybe even look at that when they make plans for travel and emphasize that this is your high-risk factor for delays, although are kind of in the same zone for SFO. They kind of have some, you know, and so we want to be really careful about that. But I'm just, I want to just say that, that this is really, I want our staff to take a look at it, have a copy of this as well, because this is really important, because this is when you really do have those challenging times, and we can give some bit of a predictor for that. And so this is a great data set, and I look, I suppose, forward to the day when the other data set is what we'll see. So I appreciate that, so thanks.
If I could, Chair Madrone, just comment on that briefly. It'll be a little bit more elaborate when we start the in-depth conversations with the FAA, but our plan is to start the conversation by laying those two data sets side by side and essentially tell us why we can't do this. And it shows and highlights with the analysis that Paul and his team have done how important this CAT II really is to our community. It's not just the airlines, it's the Coast Guard, it's the medical flights, it's that emergency access that we need at times when things are going awry with roadways or other means of getting in and out of Humboldt, where we really need these capabilities for all of those users.
Please. And I will emphasize that we have had done a report that shows that in Humboldt County, we have a high density of airports per capita, and it's a budget issue for us in the future. And so we want to, you know, think about that, and making the main airport perform better is going to become more and more important as we see, as we see more and more challenges with the existing airports, all the other airports that we have and have to think about. So I appreciate this work and thanks, thank you so much.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson.
You know, it used to be that I would always book the first flight out in the morning because the plane came in the night before, but that's not the case anymore, is it? That's changed things up a little bit there.
It has, and we still have, well, right now, with our overnight closures from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM for that electrical work taking place, United has an arrival that's scheduled around 9:30 PM to get in before that closure and then launch as soon as we open again in the morning. But what Paul's showing there, and as Supervisor Wilson highlighted, part of that, the statistics there are due to our SFO challenges on the other end. And SFO is a little different than us. They have a CAT III or multiple, I believe. Paul's helped them with some of that work in the past, but they're spatially constrained in that their runways are too close to one another, so they can't do simultaneous CAT III approaches at the same time. So yes, the weather that we experience here is a big driver of those yellow areas on that data set, but it also is for SFO in a different way.
Great, thank you for that. All right, Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you. And I, you know, I was just comparing side by side our arrival and departure times, and we're really specifically talking about arrivals being constrained here, because departures are, it sounds like are a little bit more feasible in the fog, to a degree. Is that true?
Yes and no. They, for safety reasons, they have to meet those minimums to depart in case something would happen on departure and they needed to come back and make an emergency landing. So, yeah, sorry.
And our agenda packet talks about the winter months, but it does look like the summer months are really the tricky ones, given our foggy conditions. But I just wanted to note, you know, our air service providers do work around this, and all of the scheduling of flights, from what I can tell, has really been tailored to these more green parts of the schedule, so people can count on that being part of the thinking. But there isn't always the 100% certainty that they'll be able to make either the arrival or the departure, so. But we do have, and I appreciate that you, sorry, this is a little rambling, but I do appreciate that you brought up our data meeting, being similar to nationwide reliability data for air travel. So it sounds like we are doing good things in that department and doing everything we can to be the best possible airport to fly in and out of here. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Supervisor Arroyo. That goes back to my introduction on perception versus performance. Our performance is right on par with national average, but we're looking to improve that performance and also the public's perception, which is often a little bit different than what the actual performance statistics show.
Great, thank you very much. And with that, we're going to go ahead and go to public comment. And in the Zoom, I have two hands up. First one is 0116, star six to unmute. Welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, first, I just wanted to say that somehow the call volume is just like totally garbled. I can barely understand any of like the last speakers or even some of the board members. I don't know what's going on. Just wanted to pass that your guys' way.
Thank you.
And that was, there was one other thing, I don't know if it has anything to do with it, if there's like a, you know, there is like a national pilot shortage, you know, due to the COVID vaccines. I don't know if that's anything to play into the scheduling, but look up at USFreedomFlyers.org, and there's a bunch of pilots speaking about the heart issues and how the FAA actually like changed the EKG, like levels on like people's heart tests so they could still fly after taking the shot. But anyway, that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And next, we have 0326, star six to unmute. There you go, welcome.
Hi, this is Charles Wilson. I remember back in 19, about 1945, they had an article in Popular Science describing the airport. They had, they called the airport the foggiest airport in the United States. The, in those days, they had this FIDO system, we headed it at LAX too, where you put oil in trenches near the runways, and you set the oil on fire with the idea that the oil, the heated air would get rid of the fog. It didn't work, but years later, you had the problem with all the, well, I don't know if they ever dealt with it or not, but with the oil that was left in the trenches there. But the thing is, the FAA had, oh, a couple of years back, they were talking about extending the runways. They didn't look into it too completely, but they did talk about the number of enplanements. Now, back in 1970, it was about 102,000 enplanements per year. At 10 or 15 years ago, when they had the, proposing the extension, they still hadn't come back up to 102,000. But the FAA projected that we're going to have, I think, 140, 145, 150,000 enplanements in the next 20 years. So a lot of these estimates that the FAA may come up with are suspect, because a lot of it, you know, you want to promote your particular project. So be careful and... a lot of it, you know, you want to promote your particular project. So be careful in whatever you look at there. And thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much. Okay, and next we will go to those here in the audience today that would like to comment on this item. And we're not really taking any action. This is just a report to us. Thank you.
Strongly support moving forward with this as fast as we can. It's nice to have a whizbanger in the room. The definition of a non-whizbanger, he makes a wag, which is a wild-ass guess. A whizbanger makes an ewag, which is an educated wild-ass guess. Feel free to use that word. This is kind of imperative for our economy here to make this as soon as we can. The, I do fly enough and I talk to enough different levels of airline people, happen to run into some executives sometimes with United and just, but we are not a desirable airport to come to because of the constraints we have here. And that's why people kind of wondered. I said, now, we used to try and schedule your earliest flight out and your last flight in, but that's the opposite time regarding your best time for fog. So now, of course, when I fly out of here, if I was going to San Francisco, I probably would consider booking like a 145 flight down to Los Angeles and then bounce back up. As soon as these things are fixed, I think we'll see other airlines coming in. I think you'll find that they will find it's profitable. Right now, it's, it's one of the least desirable flights that they have to fulfill and it's treated accordingly with the variety of different airlines we have. And good on you guys. Fix this up and then I think maybe, maybe I can start flying to San Francisco if I have to, but I prefer LAX to Mexico. Thank you. I'll have to speak.
Thank you. Any other commenters on this specific agenda item? And seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion to accept and receive the report.
I'll move to accept and receive or file the report.
Okay, and?
Sure, one second.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Wilson and a second by Supervisor Arroyo. And we'll go ahead and cast our votes. Five oh, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Look forward to it. Okay, and with that, we're going to go ahead and jump in and take on a couple of other agenda items. And then, of course, at 11 o'clock, we have our closed session items. And I know there's going to be a few folks that want to speak to that. So the first item, I, one, is consider making the at-large appointment to the Humboldt County Aviation Advisory Committee. And do we have anybody presenting on that? Kathy Hayes, Clerk of the Board. Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The item before you today is for your board to consider making an at-large appointment to the Humboldt County Aviation Advisory Board. At the June 27th Board Supervisors Meeting, the board was notified that there was an at-large vacancy due to the expired term of Kyle Gable. The vacancy was posted and applications were accepted. At the time of this posting, we've only had one application on file. We've only received one application, and that is the application of Mr. Gable, who is requested to be reappointed. And with that, I will turn it back to the board.
Great. Seems pretty straightforward. Any discussion on the board's part? Supervisor Wilson?
I'm ready to make a motion, but I'm probably?
You should wait until we have public comment, please. Supervisor Bone, did you have a comment? No? Okay, so we'll go to public comment on this item and go into the Zoom first. And I do not see any hands up there, so I'll bring it back here to the audience. Anybody here today that'd like to speak on this appointment, please come forward. Seeing none, bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'll move approval for the appointment.
Okay.
Second.
So Supervisor Wilson moving and Supervisor Bushnell seconding. And we'll go ahead and cast our votes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Great. Moving right along. Thank you very much, Clerk of the Board Hayes. Good to see you. Item I, two, is the temporary employment of retired annuitant as senior public health nurse, public health in the Department of Health and Human Services. Four fifths vote required. So, and we have a presentation on this. Welcome.
Hi, good morning. Michelle Stevens, Assistant Director for Health and Human Services, standing in for Public Health so they could go back to work. So this request is for waiving the 180 days for retired annuitant Alice Oliff to return part-time, 10 to 20 hours per week as an extra help senior public health nurse to continue to provide support for the Nurse Family Partnership Home Visiting Program. We have several nurses that we've hired that come from the hospital sector who have said and experienced that public health nursing, community work, getting out in the community and doing home visiting is very different than what they're used to. And Alice has 13 years as a senior public health nurse in Nurse Family Partnership to mentor, train, onboard them while we fill the current position so that there's not an undue burden on the supervisor and the other Nurse Family Partnership nurses. So that's what this is for.
Great. Very succinct. Thank you. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, we'll go to our Zoom for public comment. And I do not see any hands up there. Is there anybody here in the audience today that would like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing, oh, I do have one hand up in Zoom. I'm going to go ahead and call on that. 0326, star six to unmute. Welcome.
Hi, this is Charles Wilson. Just a general comment about the Health Department there. The last couple of months have been having a lot of talk about?
So, Charles, we're not doing general comment on public health. We're doing comments on this specific item of a temporary employment of a retired annuitant.
Oh, okay. Well, I just wish that they would listen to some of the public information that they do receive. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Understood. Thank you very much. Okay, and with that, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'll make a motion for staff recommendation.
Second.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Bushnell and a second by Supervisor Wilson. And we'll go ahead and cast our votes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Great. We're moving right along. Director Mattson, will this recycling convenience zone take very long, do you think? Or is it a quickie? Because?
I think we could do it about five or 10 minutes.
All right. And then we have two other items. Let's go ahead and do it in sequence then. And this is item number three, recycling convenience zones in Humboldt County. And Director Mattson, welcome.
Good morning, Chairman Madron, members of the board. The department has been asked by CalRecycle to recommend recycling convenience zones for the pilot projects that are being done by Hambro right now, understanding that these pilot projects are, the county's actually the sponsor, is providing recycling services in Willow Creek and in Redway in the upcoming short-term future, we hope, two days a week. Please note that these do not meet the requirements of full-time projects. After the pilot project is done, if we do not have legislation to change the rules of the hours of operation, these services will be cut. So that's another thing we need to discuss this morning. The first item, though, is the actual recycling zones. In my report, you see that we have the one, three, and five mile radiuses. Based on a phone call with CalRecycle last week, there are actually no limits to the recycling convenience zones that can be placed on pilot projects. And looking at those zones, I would recommend that for Southern Humboldt, we completely involve both stores that are affected in both Garberville and Redway. If we do a one mile, we will, we will be, you know, forcing one store to provide recycling services while the other store does not have to provide those or to pay a fee of $100 a day. The other is out in Willow Creek. You have no stores out there that meet the minimum $2 million threshold. I still recommend that we adopt a limit line out there, probably to include Hoopa as well as Willow Creek, because you do have two grocery stores. And the minute they go over that $2 million revenue a year, if they do, they will be kicked into providing the recycling services that are provided, the CRV return services that are provided by, right now, by Hambro. And so that's my first recommendation for direction of the board is those two limit lines that I would recommend immediately back to CalRecycle. The second recommendation is that we start with RCRC and CSAC, talking to other rural counties about getting some, a team together that we can get some legislation together so that these remote areas can be serviced. Hambro has stated numerous times that if they have to do these four days a week, they would not be financially viable. Their pilot project does end on April 1st, 2026. We have a little bit of time, but not a whole lot of time. As you recall, back when this, all the recycling centers shut down due to COVID, HWMA actually applied for some variances under a pilot program from CalRecycle and were denied. So now that we've got these, I'd behoove it on the county to try to make them permanent so that the rural areas of the county can be serviced. And then the third item is to consider all the recycling convenience zones. Right now, the convenience zone around Arcata goes up to the edge of McKinleville, but does not go into McKinleville. But there are provisions in CalRecycle code that state that if an area has curbside recycling, that could be considered a higher and better efficient use, and those areas may be considered to be convenient zones even without a recycling facility in that zone, which would exempt those grocery stores. But then again, you have a lot of people that are using those services that can't travel the distance to Arcata individually. And that's a little bit longer-term discussion and thought. But if you want me to proceed to get more information on that and the possibilities and return to the board for the long-term convenience zones, I'd be more than willing to do that with your direction. If not, we will just deal with the pilot project and the legislation needed and move forward with that. I do have, I believe, a couple of screenshots for you, just to show you these areas real quick. Nikki, do?
Yeah.
So this is Northern Humboldt. Note that the area in Fortuna, and I'm sorry, I apologize for the lack of quality on these graphics. These are the CalRecycle maps that were provided to us. Note that the Fortuna area is, the green is the served area. That means the stores within that limit that meet this requirement do not have to provide buyback at their store. Notice in the south in Fortuna, that has not been updated. According to the Fortuna City Manager, Fortuna is now included in, all the stores in Fortuna are now in a convenience zone and they do not have to provide it. And then Nikki, you had the Southern Humboldt up there just a second ago? There we go. We got, so that would be a one-mile radius around the stores in Southern Humboldt. And I would argue that we should just, at request, that the limit be increased to include both those stores. And that's my staff report. Thank you.
Okay, great. I've got questions from Supervisor Bushnell and then Bone.
Thank you. So I'm just curious about Eureka. There's no area in Eureka that is exempt because the, go ahead.
No, there is not. The five-mile limit is the biggest, the one, three, and five miles are the permanent, they're not, the pilot is an exemption from those one, three, and five. So the five-mile limit around the Arcata is from the Hambro facility and it does not reach into Eureka. I have broached that discussion with CalRecycle. That's why I brought up the third item of the possible, because we do have curbside recycling voluntary in our franchise, as well as the city also has curbside recycling. And I've started the conversation with the city staff about where they want to go with this as well, because that would probably be a joint effort of both of us. My discussions with CalRecycle last week where their staff were pretty resistant to including Eureka. But, you know, there is that provision that says if you have recycling in your franchise, you could petition for it. And that's something that we would, we would do based on board direction and in cooperation with the city.
So, do you, do you know if Hambro has any anticipation of coming into Eureka?
They have looked. They've had very, very difficult time finding the right property. They had one site and the landlord said, said no. They are continuing to look, but they've been pretty, you know, they've been pretty diligent. And as we are with our buildings in Eureka, it's very difficult to find the property up here.
Okay, Supervisor Bone?
Send them to the fairgrounds. They had a recycling center there once before.
I've made that recommendation several times.
And what was their comment?
I have not gotten a comment back. I've just let them know that we had it there before in the parking lot.
And with the $2 million threshold, I mean, in all honesty, Trinidad, all of those stores are exceeding $2 million. So if they get audited, they're all going to, so I would make these things if, for the pilot program for right now, because the problem being is, is Fortuna and the merchants, one merchant, went upon himself and got it changed to a three-mile radius, because he was paying $3,500 a month to not have recycling. You know, $3,500 a month.
$100 a day.
$100 a day. So basically what it came down to is while this was going on, they were, a lot of, and again, I don't know if you've been in touch with RCRC, I'll give you the name and everything else. We do have a JPA that has, that has a recycling garbage component to it on RCRC. And they would fully welcome anything. But as this is going along, and HWMA, you're right, when they shut down, they, they made some minor efforts, but they weren't too extreme. Because I voted against, I was the only one who voted against every time shutting down recycling. And then we ended up with people with 200 and 300 days of recycling. So two days a week in any location would be more than enough, because most people recycle on a sat, but they would make arrangements so they don't build that up. So I think we should make this as liberal as possible and write a letter to, tells us we want to divest from everything that's not recycled or whatever the case may be. But I'm just saying, I think we need to move forward and make sure that we are more encompassing than the stores you have now, because we're one audit away from probably including another 15 or 20 stores. Because, I mean, 2 million, I mean, that's not, you know, it's only about 6,000 a day. So, I mean, most of these stores are doing, a lot of these stores are doing more than that, so with the pricing. So I think as we move forward, I think we should take as big a bite as the apples possible, because I, I look at Southern Humboldt and Michelle just said Miranda Market, it's going to get sucked into it. And this, this is, and a lot of people weren't paying the fine. And CalRecycle's sitting on quite a bit of money, our recycling dollars. So I think to get as much possible out of them would probably be, because at the end of the day, who we're trying to look out for is the customers and, and our businesses that are having to pay these fines to the state. So.
Thank you. And Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you. So I want to make, I want to test that I'm understanding this correctly for Eureka in particular. So because within city limits, people must have a recycling container as part of their service for solid waste and recycling. Are you saying that then we would have the opportunity to work with the city to exempt these businesses that are in city limits or are served by that recology franchise that provides the recycling container so that people are exempted from this requirement? Is that essentially what's happening?
That is one of the categories under CalRecycle.
Okay.
Although they have pushed back with me on that because it is, it's, I guess they have, it's not cut and set in stone.
Sure.
So we have to make a solid argument on why.
So, so if that were to happen, then people would have the choice of putting their recycling in their recycling container and not collecting CRV on it or going to Arcata with it to Hambro?
Correct.
Okay. I would be, you know, I'd be interested in hearing more about that option, just because, you know, it is available within a somewhat reasonable distance. But, you know, I've heard a lot from the businesses in town that are very understandably struggling with, to understand this, given the curbside service.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. So I just want to piggyback on Supervisor Arroyo. I spoke with CalRecycle last week about Eureka. I had a, a Eureka business that also has a business in Southern Humboldt. And they, I was, we were trying to get an exemption for the Southern Humboldt, which they do have, but also for Eureka. And they are saying no to curbside to exempt the businesses because there's curbside service. That is not an option. And currently, you, they don't, they won't do the five-mile radius to Arcata where Hambro is for the Eureka businesses. The businesses in Eureka that are doing the recycling are taking that in so they don't do that $100 a day, but it's also creating a mess around those businesses because then they don't know where to take that recycling to, which they're supposed to take it to Hambro, which makes no Hambro, which makes no sense to me why the customer can't take it to Hambro, get their recycling money, and then that business can get the exemption, which is what I, I was arguing with CalRecycle. What's the difference if the business takes it or the customer takes it and gets their dollar back or their whatever? And so to kind of piggyback on what Natalie said, curbside service for the customer is not going to get the exemption for the business. They said they're not going to do that. And, and so I, I think that we do, what Supervisor Bone said, need to have a really good argument for the businesses in Eureka. There are small, very, a lot of very small businesses in Eureka that this is just really killing them with, and making a mess around Eureka. You also are having people that are coming and taking that recycling, and it's getting deposited throughout Eureka. You see it everywhere. And so I don't know what the answer is, Tom, but whatever we can do, I think we need to really push back.
I, I agree, because I don't take just standard staff answer of no when it's right in, right in the regulations that it is an option.
Well, and I don't think, you know, the rural areas of Southern Humboldt and Willow Creek and Trinidad get the exemptions, but Eureka, where it's very convenient, also just because it's, I don't, I don't know what their reasoning is, well, oh, it's, it's urban, so no, they don't get that exemption. That's not fair, honestly.
All right. And so I think that may very well be part of the letter to CSAC and RCRC that you mentioned as one of the items. So if you could summarize in brief the three items that you're recommending, so that might be able to be formed into a motion, but we're going to go to public comment before we do the motion, but those three items.
Okay. The first item is for the pilot project recycling zones, and what I'm hearing is you want them as large as possible, which I will, I can do, do that with CalRecycle staff. The second option is to work with RCRC and CSAC to develop legislation, improve recycling convenience zones in, in rural areas to include less hours of operation and maybe larger, larger than the five-mile radius. And then the third option is to work with CalRecycle and the local cities to look at our agreements and see if we can develop convenience zones based around our solid waste franchises that have recycling as a, a portion of that franchise.
Right. So that sounds good, and I doubt that any of us are going to be able to repeat all of that as the motion, but I'm hoping that if we agree, that the motion could be as was stated by Director Mattson, which could be, the direct language could be pulled out of the, out of the video feed. Is that correct, Nikki? Is that going to work for you as far as documenting a detailed motion here? So with that, any further comments, questions from the board? Supervisor Bone?
Can we, and somewhere near on your part-time, just talk to the boys up there at Hambro about how much space, what do they need? Because that's a mobile facility they do for their, some of these pop-ups they do. And whereas, could, how can we accommodate them? I mean, I mean, can we go to, can we go to the effect of maybe accommodating one day a week in our parking lot across the street here? I mean, it's an empty parking lot, it's an empty space. Could they come there one day a week on a Saturday, centrally located, and then our five miles encompasses all the way, gets the Country Club Market, gets the Murphys and Cotten, gets the, you know, going out to Safeway and out there in Myrtle, so.
So the, the issue there is their funding and how they operate. And so if it's less than 30 hours a week, it would have to be a pilot program attached to a grant, and we can talk with them about it. If it's more than 30 hours a week, then they get funding through, it's like Fortuna, which is not a pilot program, it's a set facility.
No, understood.
And so that, we could talk with them again about both of those options.
I mean, let's, let's make it easy for them, because this is, at the end of the day, we're trying to accommodate our businesses and our, you know, and, and the people that, you know, live here. And, and we're not benefiting with an empty parking lot two days a week over here. So, I mean, that, that, that is a facility we could use or other facilities. I mean, I don't know how much space we rent at Mall 101. I don't know any of those, but we should look at some of these, you know, facilities that are not being used and provide that, so, if we can.
So just as a note, I do meet with Hambro and CalRecycle once a month to talk, to touch base on the pilot program, and we can certainly put that on our next agenda, because the way it started was in Willow Creek, and then it got added to Redway with an additional $500,000, and we can talk about that with, see if we can get funding to help Hambro to do that in Eureka.
Okay. Great. Thank you. All right. We're going to go ahead and go to public comment at this point, and in the Zoom, I have one hand up, 0116, star six to unmute. Welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, once again, I'd urge you, if you've got some kind of tech person to, you know, like call in to, you know, what people are calling into and listen to this and see if they can dial in the audio, because it's like 70% of its garbled, and you can't hear what's going on, just, just saying. But as far as recycling, I've got like a buddy who's like, you know, drops, you know, trash off in, you know, HWMA, and he's saying that like the trash and recycling are all in one pile, and it's all going into a landfill right now, and it's something to do with like China not buying our recycling. And so it's kind of like a, kind of like a hoax even separating it right now, and I'm, you know, harassing businesses for not doing so. And I remember when, back out in Samoa before the HW had moved their office out there, it was kind of the same situation with, you know, e-waste, and I, because at one point they had like a free e-waste drop-off out there. And I went out there and I dropped it off and, you know, talking to one of the guys that worked there, you know, about, you know, well, you know, it's getting recycled here, and he's like, oh, no, all this goes in the landfill too. So it's kind of seems like there's some dishonest stuff going on behind the scenes, you know, telling people stuff's getting recycled when it's actually just going into a landfill and they're getting charged more for it. And then on, you know, recently we have the, what was it, the composting program, which shut down our perfectly functioning recycling center, where, you know, people go in locally here in Eureka and all, you know, kind of more cart before the horse, you know, stuff, where like, you know, maybe a composting facility should have been built standalone and leaving that in operation, and that might have helped not have some of these problems we're seeing now. But anyways, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next we'll go to those in the audience here today, anybody that would like to speak on this recycling convenience zone agenda item. This is your chance to come forward. Okay? And seeing none, I mean, rest assured, we are continuously trying to figure out this puzzle at HWMA as well as with these pilot projects and suggestions made from others about how to improve things in Eureka. And so I'll bring it back to the board for any final thoughts. Supervisor Arroyo?
I'm ready to make a motion, and I'm going to attempt to get all of, the highlights of what you said. So part one was to establish the pilot program. So I, is that correct?
Nope. It's establish the recycling zone for the pilot program.
Recycling zone for the pilot program as proposed in the agenda here, and to work with Hambro and the city of Eureka to look at whether there's an alternative for the city of Eureka as far as an exemption.
Okay.
And then what was the, what was the next part?
To work with RCRC and CSAC on, on legislation to improve recycling zones within the rural area.
Yes. So work with RCRC and CSAC on legislation to improve recycling in rural areas. And then lastly, I'd like to add one, which is just to ask that, because this touches on, because we've talked about a few different elements of solid waste and recycling and composting, and I, I think to add in the coming months, a report to the full board about the status of some of the waste management efforts in the county so that we can, you know, have our board just be up to speed on that.
Yeah. The one correction would be it's not just with the city of Eureka, it's with all franchises that have recycling in, in them.
Great. Thank you for helping me with that.
So I'm happy to second that if the motioner could, the first item with the zones is to extend it as broad as possible.
Right.
That sounds good.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion by Supervisor Arroyo and a second by Supervisor Bushnell, and final comments, Supervisor Wilson?
I support all the conversation and the motion today. I do just want to put it out there that we need, we need to be supportive of standardization with relationship to how we containerize these products, and, and because it's really this vast diversity of, of materials is, is hard to manage and really even harder to manage with relationship to these land, these rural landscapes and rural communities. And I would also mention that a vast majority of what's being held in these containers is literally mostly water, and it's in one form or another, flavored in all kinds of different ways. And so reduce, reuse, and then recycle. So I think we have to be, promote that as much as possible, that really recycling is probably last on the list. Actually, last is throwing it away, but reduction of products, using products that require us to have these containerized item, or liquids. I will put out that almost 15% of what comes through our ports is liquids in drink form being shipped around the world, and, and so this has a huge carbon footprint in terms of moving these liquids all around, and then in the end, we're, have these complications around what to do with the containers. So I think we all can work on that, again, as sort of an individual way to see what we can do to reduce. But with that, I do support the motion and thanks the staff for their report.
Okay. So let's go ahead and cast our votes then.
Thank you, Tom, for that update and the work you do on this.
Yep. Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you.
Got your marching orders. All right. And we are now at, at 11 o'clock, 11:05 for closed session items. I believe we have six of them, and we'll have County Council read these into the record, and then we'll take public comment on these.
Thank you, Chairman Drone. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Sections 54954.5 and 54957, in order to consider the public employee performance evaluation for the position of the clerk of the board. It is also the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.6, in order to review the county's position and instruct its designated labor negotiators. Finally, it is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9D1, in order to discuss existing litigation in the cases of Friends of the Eel River versus County of Humboldt at All, Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2201593, Southern Humboldt Community Healthcare District versus County of Humboldt at All, Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2201351, and Mercer Frazier Company versus County of Humboldt, Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2201537.
Thank you very much, County Council. And now we'll go for public comment on these closed session items, and I do not see any hands up in the Zoom, so I'll go to those who are in the audience today. Please come forward. You've got three minutes to speak on these closed session items. Please let us know which item you're speaking on.
Kim Swawski, I don't have the number, but I'm speaking on the item with, this filling the room today. I think this is a chance to have a momentous day. In a, in a good world, a perfect world, or not perfect, but as perfect as we can get, we would take these people out of the herd. I mean, you're, all kinds of labor negotiations going on there. And if I had my way, I would have a unanimous 5, 5-0 vote to go ahead and offer these people a living wage. And I, it's hard to say what it is, but I think you should step forward after all this time and say, we want to give you, let's just pull a number, 1750 an hour, something more than they're getting now. I have all kinds of people who, you know, you can't get anybody to work for, for $20 an hour out there. I have a, a family member who's a sophomore in high school, and he gets 16, plus I tip him a little bit, you know, as far as that goes. So please do the right thing today. It's been a long time coming. And then report out if it's a 3, 3-2 vote, well, you say it was a 3-2 vote, and these are the people who voted yes or no, so we want to know who's voting out there. It's closed session, but I really wish it would be a unanimous vote to do the right thing today, and it's been a long time coming, and that would make my day, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your politeness out there in the audience. And anybody else that would like to speak, come on forward. You've got three minutes. Welcome.
I'm speaking for the, the contract. My name is Margaret Caldwell, and I live in Eureka. I provide in-home support service for non-family members, community members in their own homes. I, to this job, I bring professional experience. I was a CNA in a local skilled nursing facility for 14 years, and before that, I worked with medically fragile children in a school setting. I'm now in a position where I can no longer work full-time for a number of reasons. I, I care for my 84-year-old mother in our home, and she, thanks to her good pension, does not qualify for, for county services, so I'm not compensated for that. And I'm grateful to the county for giving me the IHSS position, because it allows me to work part-time and gives me the flexible hours to, to care for my mother in our home. Also, the pay enables me to contribute a large portion to our, to our utilities and groceries, and I'm fortunate to receive Medi-Cal, although I would rather be able to insure myself through a workplace, a workplace plan, which is something that has given me a lot of self-esteem in, in previous careers. And as I am pushing 60, I'm becoming more and more worried about a lack of the retirement plan at, for, in IHSS, and the, even though other county workers do have such a plan. Now, on, on the other hand, if our salary were increased enough, then that would enable us to contribute a little, give us a little more money so that we could contribute for our own retirement, and that would really alleviate stress among a lot of us, the stress of worrying that we will be able to remain housed as we get older.
30 seconds.
Thanks. So, but the, the real reason I'm here is that our community's elders and those with disabilities need more qualified workers, more willing qualified workers to provide care to enable them to stay in their own homes instead of being forced into skilled nursing facilities. But we, but, but we're, our compensation packages need to improve markedly in order for us to recruit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. Good morning, everyone. My name's Mary Grace Beldas. I'm a home care provider. I've been here working in this for 16 years. I stayed in this line of work because I care about the people in my community. I care about the, I'm sorry, I'm going to tear up. I'm frustrated. I'm really angry sometimes for the lack of saying this. The other day, I walked to the grocery store, and I watched several individuals disabled, some in wheelchairs and not, and I wanted to know where their care providers are. And I noticed as I approached them, where are they? And they just said that they were limited on their hours, that their providers had already used up their hours, and they weren't able to provide anyone to help them, not even a neighbor. So I asked, I'm sorry. One man mentioned that he had received only three hours a week, he was in a wheelchair, and he didn't have a provider, he needed a lot of assistance and help. Despite the, the experiences that he was in Humboldt, he presented, the challenge was for him to get groceries at the store. Okay. Since many recipients in Humboldt are not authorized for the amount of hours they actually need, many providers are forced to work for multiple clients, leading to fatigue and burnout. This crisis is fairly complicated by the low wages IHSS providers receive, making only 50 cents above the minimum wage. I, myself and other IHSS providers are essential resource that protect people in our community and prevent them from falling through the cracks, but this board has done little to recognize that. So I'm bringing this message. this message again. If we want to ensure that all of our community, older adults and disabled folks are able to receive the care they need when they need it, the Board needs to pass a strong contract now, now, for the IHSS providers. Otherwise, we run the risk of falling and falling and failing our older adults in our disabled community, leaving folks without providers. The lack of respect for providers and those we care for has gone far too long in Humboldt. It's time for the Board to respect, protect us, and pay the IHSS providers the wages they need to keep Humboldt older adults and disabled folks cared in their own homes where it's safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, good morning. Hi, my name is Sabina Lampenga. I work as an IHSS caregiver. I've been a caregiver since 2012. I've been a single mother raising my son on this income, and I come to let you know that I am now a member of your community. And I was able to afford a two-bedroom apartment for $1,150, and applying here in your community off my pay that I was making, and IHSS is my only source of income, I was denied a one-bedroom apartment for $1,000 because they want proof that I make triple of the income of what they're asking for for apartments. So, that means I need to make $3,000 a month just to rent a one-bedroom apartment for myself. With that being said, I need to work 300 hours a month. Without days off, that's 10-hour days. With days off, that's 15-hour days, and I still got to pay for my other bills, not just rent. So, I came here today to ask you Board Supervisors to help us help ourselves. I'm grateful for the government assistance. I'm grateful for the food stamps I receive, but I prefer to be able to be independent and to stand and to work and have that pursuit of happiness here in the American dream to provide for myself, not to live off the government assistance. Yes, I'm grateful for it, but I would like to have that wage increase so I can get my own place and supply everything I need to supply for my family. I'm grateful for the IHSS, and SEIU is here to help the elderly, the handicap, and children with disabilities. We take the time out of our lives to help those who can't help themselves and speak up for themselves, but as workers, who's going to help us and take care of us? And if we can't take care of ourselves, then who's going to take care of the other people? So, when you guys go home, please think about your decision. It's not just affecting me, but it's affecting thousands of us, and I'm grateful. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next, welcome, both of you.
Hi, thank you. I'm Danielle. This is my daughter Cheyenne. She, I'm the care provider for her, and I'm also her mother. I've been providing care for her through the IHSS since 2014, when her behavior patterns led to her being diagnosed with autism. Caring for Cheyenne takes all my heart, my patience, my courage. It's worth it, but it's rarely easy. My family makes it just enough to cover all the bills, even though we often live paycheck to paycheck. Like many other IHSS providers here in Humboldt County, I have to pay a rural tax that providers in other countries do not experience. Allow me to paint the picture for you. Cheyenne sees a variety of specialists, behavior specialists, a psychiatrist, and other medical professions. My family and I all live here in Eureka, but Cheyenne's closest medical appointment is in Windsor, which is over 200 miles away, and that's the nearest one. My IHSS, hang on, here, let me see, my IHSS wages barely allow me to afford the cost of transportation and lodging to these appointments. I know this story sounds familiar, hang on. This is my, my, allows me to barely allow the cost of transportation and lodging to these appointments when I have to take her out of town. I know my story was sound familiar to a lot of providers and consumers in this county. The rural tax places a large burden on families who provide and receive care through IHSS. In a county where resources are often hard to access, we need the country to make the necessary investments in IHSS to ensure those providing and receiving care are not barred from accessing life-saving resources. This begins with paying IHSS workers a livable wage to ensure they are able to provide and comprehend care that our respected workers need. Our families, our lives, our families and communities depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
What do we want?
Contract!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Okay, please, please.
When do we want it?
It's not the appropriate, please, it's not the appropriate time to speak out like that. If you do want to make comments, you could come up to the podium, and that would be more than welcomed. So, anybody else? Yes, please.
Yeah, my name is Letitia Guerrero, and I just wanted to point out, there's been a ton of unused hours. You guys are the fourth in the state of unused hours, and you have to really look at that. What is, why is that, right? We are in a crisis here. We don't have enough people that are willing to make less money providing care for somebody if they can make more money at a fast food restaurant. People are here because they're passionate about the job that they do. They're passionate about the people that they care for. They need you guys to come in agreement with them and give them a livable wage. It's not much that they're asking for. It's not much that we're asking for here. And I do believe that it is time, it is time, and it is an appropriate time for everybody to stand up and rise together and say that they want a contract now. They're not asking for much. They want a livable wage.
Thank you.
What do we want?
Contract!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Contract!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Contract!
When do we want it?
Now!
What do we want?
Contract!
Thank you. Thank you.
If we don't get it?
Shut it down!
If we don't get it?
Shut it down!
If we don't get it?
Shut it down!
Please, we hear you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you for coming here today and sharing your thoughts with us. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
All right, folks, anybody else with comments? Come forward, please. Welcome.
Contract!
Shut it down!
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 So, I'm.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Lynn Robbins. I'm a care recipient, and I'm in need of a care provider. Mine just quit.
Hang on just a second. Let's just wait until we can, we want to be able to hear you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm Lynn Robbins.
Oh.
Apparently, okay. I'm a care recipient, and I'm in need of a care provider. I came down here this morning because I heard that they were going to be here talking to you. It was my best chance to connect with a number of people. I'm having trouble finding someone to do the cooking, the services that I require, and so it ties into what the last lady said. There just aren't people that are willing, you know, people call, you know, my, I have an ad in Craigslist. It says $16 an hour. People call to it and say, oh, by the way, I charge 25.
Right.
So, just to repeat what they're saying. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anybody else with comment today on our closed session items? Okay, seeing none, we are in recess. Thank you, folks. All right, we are back from our recess. Board of Supervisors, August, excuse me, August 8th, bless you. And so, County Council, could we have a report out?
Thank you Chairman Drumm. There was no reportable action taken with regard to Items G2 through G5.
That is a very quick report. Thank you for that. And with that, we'll go back to our regular agenda, and we are on J1, which is Green Diamond Resource Company Lot Line Adjustment and Joint Timber Management Plan, 4/5ths vote required. And to present for that, we have Director Ford.
Thank you Chairman Drumm. As you mentioned, I'm John Ford with the Planning and Building Department to present the Green Diamond Lot Line Adjustment and Joint Timber Management Plan. I apologize, this item should have actually been on consent this morning, but since it's not enlisted as a public hearing, we will have a public hearing on it.
Okay, I will open the public hearing at this time.
Thank you. And so, basically, what this application is to do is to facilitate the dedication of land from Green Diamond to the community forest in McKinleyville. And if I could share my screen?
Tom, is your mic on?
My mic is on.
Yep.
And my internet has crashed.
Does anybody need to see the presentation, or have you already reviewed the project? I have two.
If I can just say, basically, what it does, it eliminates property lines and makes the primary property line Murray Avenue, and I.
It's a good way to go, and it is an exciting project, the community forest, so.
Yep.
With that, seeing no other questions, I'll take public comment, and I see zero in the attendees on Zoom, and so, I'll bring it back to those in the audience where there is zero folks here to testify, so we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Do we need to close public comment?
And I will close the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion for staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Motion by Supervisor Bushnell, and second by Supervisor Arroyo, and we'll take, do we have voting tabs theoretically? I don't have one up.
That's okay, I'll do a roll call.
Just do it, yeah, wrap the day up.
Okay, Supervisor Drumm?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
And Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Wilson is absent.
Passes four.
To zero.
Zero. Great, all right. And then, the next one is Item 2, the Carrico Lot Line Adjustment and Joint Timber Management Plan. Director Ford.
This is a very similar circumstance in terms of being a lot line adjustment and joint timber management plan. What this basically does is carves the property line around an existing residence that crosses over the property line, and then uses the Lindholm, or I'm sorry, that's, uses the creek as a new property line, and then converts the area on the, basically, the southwest corner of the property to Green Diamond and allows the property owner of the smaller parcel for their house to be all on their parcel. There are no issues with this. The joint timber management plan was deemed adequate by the Forest Review Committee.
Yeah, it looks like a good resolution between two property owners with no controversy with anybody else, and actually improves the viability of managing for timber.
Can we open the public hearing?
Open the public hearing on this one. Thank you. I get tired here today. So, see if there's any public comments. Nothing in Zoom, nothing here in the room, so I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion for staff recommendations. I'll second that one, too.
Okay, motion by Bushnell, second by Arroyo, and let's take a roll call vote, please.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Drumm?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 4-0.
Great, thank you, everybody. And then, we have some adjournment certificates we want to present.
Yeah, one's right there.
Okay. And the first one, we're closing this meeting today in deepest sympathy for Andrew Kitna.
Worked for Humboldt County Sheriff's Department and passed away a couple weeks ago. Deepest sympathies for his family. And then, also, in deepest sympathy for Mel Birdie's family, did a variety of things in the Fortuna area, Scotia, Hobie's Market, the Fair Board, was on the Fortuna Fire Department, was a volunteer fire department member for many years, and deepest sympathies to his family. And also, Robin Newman, Company Four in Carlotta, passed away suddenly on cruise night, actually got to cruise with his wife that night, and his, his family, you know, are very sad to be missing him. He had his funeral last Saturday, a packed house, over 300 people at the Fortuna Fire Department, and that community is greatly missing him. So, deepest sympathies to both, a huge hit to Fortuna Fire District.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. And next?
That's it.
That's it, all three. Okay, great. Thank you very much. And with that, CA O'Hayes.
Chair, we need a motion on those, please, just to.
If we could have a motion to approve those certificates of appreciation for closing.
I make a motion that we accept those certificates of sympathy for the families.
Great. So, motion by?
Well, I just got to throw at the end.
Please.
Repairs at the fair should be done by Thursday. Had a schedule, did a great job. Things looked great. They got some ADA things working, got the phone line in, so the elevator now works.
Yay.
So, it looks good. Looks really good down there. So.
Fantastic.
It's amazing what our local contractors can get done.
Absolutely.
I'll second that motion, and yeah, just also express my condolences. I didn't know the individuals, Mel Birdie and Robin Newman, but it was great to hear about their contributions. But I especially wanted to share my condolences for the family and friends and colleagues of Andrew Kitna.
Great, thank you. And we'll take public comment on this item, and seeing nobody in Zoom, nobody in the room, Zoom room, and so, we are adjourned.